I believe so.
Okay. Can I be heard?
You can be heard. Yeah, I can hear you. I can always see you, but I can I can hear you.
Okay, let's open it up to the meeting. Just tell me when it's open to the public.
You're good to go.
Okay, I'm calling to order the Malibu Planet Commission regular meeting for Tuesday, January nineteen, two thousand and twenty one. Before we start the meet and before we continue the meeting too far, I have a statement to read. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to COVID nineteen pandemic, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate the Zoom meeting process. Planning Commissioners and city staff are participating from remote locations, and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or rush it by going to malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting. At this meeting, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on a particular item. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions on the screen under the sign up to speaker tab. Once this meeting is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed. Once once the item is called, I'm sorry. So please make sure that you visit malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting early to download Zoom application and sign up to speak. The recording secretary will call on those who have signed up to speak when the the item is called. So you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. The applicant team for public hearings will have a total of fifteen minutes to speak, including rebuttal time. Members of the public will be afforded three minutes only. No additional time is allowed to be donated by another speakers. Commissioners, if you have comments to make during the meeting, please raise your hand, and then we'll call on you in turn so that we can make our discussions clear for the record in the public. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jennings.
Jeff, you're muted.
You're muted, Jeff.
There you go. Sorry. I am here.
Chair Mazza.
I am here.
Commissioner Hill.
I'm here.
Commissioner Smith.
I'm here.
Commissioner Wile.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, and I assume we have a quorum because three current Commissioners are here. The others haven't been sworn in yet. So that makes a quorum, correct?
I believe so.
That is correct.
Okay. Do we have any old Commissioners here? Nope. Okay, Craig, you're the best choice. Can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay, are they putting a flag on the screen?
Yes.
There you go. All right. Okay, everybody ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic. For which it stands. One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty and justice for all. That's pretty raggedy.
Okay. Got to get this all written right.
There we go.
There we go.
There we go. Okay, now. Pat, we go to approval of the agenda next, or do we go to no, then we go to approval of the agenda next. Please only current Commissioners vote. I don't know what we'll do if we have a shortfall. I make a motion to approve item four B to be continued to, and Richard can tell me when.
Yeah, let me just make sure I'm looking at the right thing. Item four B, I believe, is the Decker Edison project.
Right.
Or, excuse me.
Yeah, that's four B.
Four B. If we could continue that to a date uncertain, because from discussing with the applicants this afternoon, they actually want to change the scope of work, so it would be best if we renotice that one.
Okay, item four A to a date uncertain. Item five A to February first two thousand and twenty one. Item five B to February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Item five E to February first, two thousand and one. And I'd like to add item five C, which is the Tesla appeal, because a submission by the applicant was never distributed. It was sent to the city on Friday and never distributed to the Commissioners. And it involves a bunch of data and another argument. So that's my motion.
It John, is this an addition to the letter that the Council for the applicants sent? This is on I'm talking about five C now. I got a letter this afternoon. Is that what you're talking about?
I did not get that letter. You got a letter?
I got a letter. It was circulated. It was it was distributed by Kathleen.
Ah, and what was the title? Because I did not get a letter on five.
Now you're gonna have to ask me to do two things at once. I'm not sure I have the capability.
I can do that either.
Hold on. Let me see if I can find it. Kathleen. This was a, oh, I've got it here. I printed it out. It's a letter from
It's a Marshall Camp, maybe?
The law firm, Houston Pentagon Law Firm.
That's right.
Yeah, no, I this is the letter that Pat Healy sent in on Friday that never got distributed through the city system.
Is that the I got something from Pat. It was a rebuttal to the staff report.
Right, but directly to you and not not to the city never put it in the record.
Kathleen, we did distribute that this afternoon, correct?
We distributed it this afternoon. It had been sent out to the individual Commissioners on Friday, but it doesn't appear that any city staff had the benefit of having it distributed to them, and therefore it wasn't distributed to the applicant until this afternoon. That's correct.
Well, to the applicant or to everybody?
Basically, everybody that hadn't received it directly on Friday from, I believe, the appellant.
Okay, I'm just checking my screen and I did not get it. Did everybody did anybody else get it?
I got it.
I got it.
It was an email with some content in the body of the email, as well as a number of attachments that were documents. Various ones. I'll look and see what time it went out. But it basically was a foreword. You know, it was a foreword of what you were sent out on Friday, late Friday afternoon. It was just it was just distributed to the people that did not previously have it distributed to them. So we're talking about the one Pat Healy sent on Friday, I believe.
So, John, how about if we if we keep it in the agenda, and then when we get to the item on the agenda, if there's a problem with this, we can decide to continue it at that point. I mean, I'm I I'm not aware that there's anything that I didn't get, but if there's somebody who didn't get stuff, we can listen to it at that time, but
Okay.
That would be my suggestion.
Okay, so we will hold off on that.
John?
Yes.
I know I can't vote on the agenda, but can you clarify? You called out five E for continuance, but not five D? They're the both. They're the two signage ones. Why would you
Five E is something else. Five E is wireless facilities.
No, no.
That's that's it. That's
Correct it to F. I'm sorry. Correct that to F.
Okay.
Let me go over this again. And by the way, Alex, I went to look at my emails, and now I just get a Zoom blank page. I can hear everybody, but how do I get back to the regular page? Do I just?
At the bottom of your screen, do you see on the taskbar the blue Zoom icon that's blue square with the white camera?
I got that, and I get a message. I'm here to I'm here. I'm Bolt from Zoom Virtual Assistant.
So if you click on that one at the bottom, you should see multiple windows, right?
The one down at the bottom?
Yeah, if you click the icon at the bottom on the taskbar, you should get multiple windows.
What I got was a message that says, hi, I'm Zoom here to help you. I'm virtual assistant. Now, should I? There's another Keeping Us Together Watch Now. Should I click that?
I do not think you're in the right place.
Okay.
You're on. You're on a Windows computer, right? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so on the taskbar, right in the middle of it, you should see a Zoom icon there. Not over on the right, but in the center closer to the middle.
Meetings and chat, webinar, conference rooms, phone systems, and marketplace.
I believe you have the browser open. Do you want to just close that window?
You close this whole thing? Okay, I'll sign up again if I disappear.
My job.
Oh, there we go.
Yes.
Okay, how would I ever guess that? Sorry, public. Okay, let me read this again.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
If I may, could you please do four A to the next meeting? I'd like to working with the Coastal Commission, I'd like to get this one done.
That's February sixteenth or first?
The first, I believe.
Okay, let's start over again. Four A continued to February first. Four B to a date uncertain. Five A to February first. Five B to February sixteenth. Five F to February first. Did I get them all, Richard?
Four B, the sixteenth, and then F, yes. Sorry, I'm just writing it down, too.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'm sorry. Are we continuing four B? That's the Decker Edison. Did you say four B?
Yes, he did.
What? I said five, four B, yes.
That's a Four B is Decker Edison, right?
That is correct. They've requested it be continued to a date uncertain.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
I can explain if you like.
That would be nice.
Sure. We had a call with the property owners around five o'clock this afternoon, the planner and I. And it turns out that the full story is that they bought the property and this project kind of as a package deal. And the homeowner explained to me that what they really want is just a pool. They don't. They're not interested in building the guest house or building the pool house. And I explained to them, if that is the case, then what we ought to do is notice it is just the pool and have a set of plans showing only that and where it is they want to locate the pool.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, maybe we have a roll call.
Chair Mazza? Here, Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, um. Okay, uh, item one A.
Report on the posting, John.
Oh, I'm sorry. Report on the posting of the agenda, please.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on January seventh, twenty twenty-one, with the amended agenda properly posted on January twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, now we're on to ceremonial presentations, which only happen like once in thirty-two years. Uh. We're going to administer the oath of office to the newly appointed commissioners. Um. Does that mean that somebody has to certify they were, uh. Appointed and? Or do we just call them up and administer the oath of office?
Well, we had a request from, um, Craig Hill to have his, um, oath of office administered by, um. Someone of his preference, which we sent the, uh, script to. I don't know if we wanted to start there.
Sure. Hoshi has it and she's right here.
Okay, can you, can you open her up or you just listen?
She's right next to me. I don't know if you need to see her.
There you go. Okay.
I'll just be here.
So we're ready to go?
Yes.
Do I have to? Salute or what am I supposed to do? I just?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Okay.
I state your name.
I, Craig Hill.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve.
That I will diligently serve.
As planning commissioner of the city of Malibu.
As planning commissioner of the city of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. There we go.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you. Hi, everybody.
Who do we have next?
So I didn't know if, um, Richard wanted to have the honor of administering the oath of office to reappointed, um. Commissioner Mazza and newly appointed Commissioner, uh, Dennis Smith, or if you'd like me to go ahead and take care of that.
Kathleen, if you'd like, I'm more than fine with it, or you can send me the script, either way.
Okay, well, I, I typically have done it, so I'm happy to do it this time. Um, so we can do it one of two ways, both at the same time or, or separately, whichever you prefer.
I could care less. I'll refer to David. Or to, uh. Yeah.
Dennis.
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 But I'll get sworn in again if you want.
Okay, well, let's, let's do Dennis since, uh, he's new. Uh, Mr. Smith, uh, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Yes, Sir Robert Smith.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve.
That I will diligently serve.
As planning commissioner of the city of Malibu.
As planning commissioner of the city of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I true bear faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation.
That I take this obligation freely without any re- mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will and say. One more time, please. I'm sorry.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That I faithfully discharge the duties of about, uh, to which I'm about to enter.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mazza. Would you like to go ahead and?
Sure.
Uh, I state your name.
Hi, John Mazza.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve.
That I will diligently serve.
As planning commissioner of the city of Malibu.
As planning commissioner of the city of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and depend, defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of Cal. For now.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mes- mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Then I will, well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties about. Which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I want to congratulate all the new commissioners and I want to thank Chris Marks. Uh, and Steve Euring, actually, for their faithful. Uh, fulfilling of their, uh, obligations and all the hard work they did, which is. No small task. Okay, we're off to. Electing, uh, chairman and, uh, chairman pro tem. Um, before we do, I want to get a consensus vote. Uh, subject to Pat. Telling us I get it wrong, but I talked to Trevor today. Trying to figure out. How the terms work. And. He suggested. And I would suggest we get consensus on this. That we continue the same terms we had. So we don't get out of sync. With everything. We got, it's like nine and a half months or something. The term of chairman right now would end in. Like the end of July, something like that. Um. That's correct. Do you know, Kathleen, exactly when it ends?
I believe it's in May.
May, okay, so. I'd like to get consensus when we do the election. That we're electing for a term that is, is consistent with the term we have now. That ends in May.
I'd like to see John continue his full term.
Yeah, well, first, before we do that. Is that, is that?
So, 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 uh, we chair. Chair, yeah, if I may, that is, that is totally at the, the, the discretion of the commission. So, yeah, so. Should this commission want to set this whoever is elected? Um, they can even, they, they can, you know, they can set it for, to, to the end of the, of that, as Kathleen said, in May. Or they can extend it out, you know, another, another nine and a half months. It really is at the pleasure of the, of the commission. Um, so, so while, while, while Trevor told you what was right, and that, that is, that is definitely a possibility. If, if the commission so wanted, they could, you know. Kind of, you know, and Catherine, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe historically what has happened is that. The commission or the chair, when this kind of, when the kind of term is kind of bifurcated. It's not mandatory, however, the chair has been allowed to be reelected to kind of finish the, the, the term. The only thing I would advise is, yes, have that out and hash that out right now. So there's no confusion. There's no, there's no issue. Whatever the term, whoever the chair may be, it should just be discussed here and now, and that way there, there's certainty, if that makes sense.
Okay, so before we have nominations. Does anybody object to doing it that way or have any comments?
Well, I have a comment on it because the, I, I don't think that's the way we've done it. It seems to me that, that what we have done. Is we've maintained the order of the rotation. For example. Uh. David is, it would be the next because he is a holdover, then I'm after that because I'm the holdover. Uh, and I've had a, a more recent term. Um. You. John, up until yesterday, you were the appointee of, of, uh. Jefferson Wagner. And that was, that was the spot you were holding, but now. Your Steve Euring's appointment. And so the, the way we do it is the first elected. Uh, the, the highest vote getter. His appointee gets next in line, so that would be Craig. And then you're the appointee of the next highest, uh, uh, vote getter, so you would be in line after Craig. And Dennis would be in line after you. I think that's the way you keep. You keep the order of this succession. Otherwise. What happens if you, you know, when you finish your term? You, you then go to the end of the line and now the order is broken. So. It seems to me that the best way to do it is just to go by the elected terms. And. And just do it that way.
By whose elected term?
So, but, but one way to solve this is you, you know, you can nominate yourself for. For chair and, and see whether you get three votes.
No, I'm not, the, the point I'm trying to make now is. Doesn't matter who's chairman. What's the term? And, uh, I suggest that we do not change. Our, our nine and a half months terms. Uh. Every time we have an election because we get out of, we get all, all out of sync. Where. It doesn't work and, and I don't know if we've ever said, oh gee, you have a term of two months. Or you've got a term of one month, or you had a term of nine, well, nine and a half months seems to be our maximum.
Right, well, that was because you can't have five people and divide it into four years equally. That's how the.
Exactly, so I was trying to keep the. The nine and a half months the same. If you want to change the nine and a half months. That would mean you're saying that whoever gets elected this time. Goes nine and a half months from now?
That's, I assume that's the way it wouldn't be done, but.
We've never done it before that I know of. We may have changed chairmans. But we didn't change the terms.
No, I, I. I, I don't see that we are changing. I mean. You know, part of the, part of the problem is that we went from April elections to November elections and that's, that may be what has thrown the thing off.
Yeah, so, uh, so the way it would stand, the way you're proposing is. Uh, whoever's chairman gets until May.
I'm sorry, what? I didn't miss the last part of what you said.
Whoever gets made chairman, their term is four months.
No, my suggestion is whoever gets named chairman has a cha- has a, has a term of nine and a half months.
How, how long has John been in the position so far?
Oh, he's been in several times, this, this particular time. I don't know.
Yeah, on this particular time, how long?
I believe it was August seventeenth, but, but, but let me, let me triple check that.
So it sounds like he'd have a few more months and then we switch.
Yeah, May.
All right, look, if it means that much, I, that's fine with me.
I don't care. I just, you know, I want to get it straightened. Uh, the, the new chairman will get a short term under your system. Are you saying he's going to get a long term?
I, I'm saying the nine and a half months starts today.
Yeah, I don't see what's wrong with that.
Well, because. Next election, you're gonna lose three, two people. Okay?
In two and a half.
Yeah. And so. They're gonna have a short term.
You mean because we're, because we're out of sync with the elections?
Yeah, we're out of sync with the council, everything. I mean, we're in sync with what we've normally done. If you want to change it where somebody hasn't. Whoever we appoint tonight. Well, which would mean, of course, like I had a short term. You, you're gonna end up with short terms if you want to stay in sync.
I, I would normally say, Commissioner Mazza, that, that, that would probably be the case, but since the ten and a half years that I've been sitting in the front row. You've had this position quite a few times, so. My thought here is to, let's start anew. We're starting anew in a lot of different places. I'd like to see us start anew right now.
I second the idea of the nine and a half month tenure for whoever is elected chair now.
Okay, do we have a third person who wants to do that?
I'll support that too.
Okay, so, uh. We have a nomination for chairman.
I'm gonna nominate David Wile.
I am going to decline, uh, like. Really new still, need another year of seasoning or so, and I'm going to nominate Jeff Jennings.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I'm gonna nominate myself.
I, I'll second that.
Now, can I ask before we vote, um. Jeff, you said something about. Going along with the council term? And that somebody was due to be here. Be nominated this time?
No, what I, well, I'm not sure what you. What? Uh, which of my references you're talking about? It, it's, it, my recollection is the way we would do it. Is that. The highest vote getter. The highest vote getter's appointee, Craig. Would be next in line. After David and me. Right, as, as the two holdovers, right? And then the next. The appointee of the next highest vote getter, that's John Mazza two point O. Reconfigured as the appointee of Steve Euring. You, you fall in line behind that and then Dennis as the. As the appointee of the next highest vote getter follows that. And then we start over again. That's, that's, but that was always informal. It was never written. I mean.
Yeah.
It was carved in stone.
Correct, a- a- and too, if I may, I would just emphasize that, that while we are, that this is a good discussion and I'm, and I'm all for it. We should not, you know, tonight should just be on the vice, the chair and then the vice chair, and it's really dicey and I revise it to, to, to bind future planning commissions on who the chair is and who the vice chair is.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's just.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, if we do it that way. That's different than what the council does. So I.
Yeah.
Want to do that? Craig?
I, I'll just, since David deferred, I would say I'd be perfectly happy to pick it up now, but for the fact that. I don't have materials in front of me and I would want to start at the next meeting, so I really had it in hand, but I feel like I could do it fine.
Okay, well, let's, let's, what, what are we doing? Let's, we're gonna do one at a time or are we gonna do them both or how are we gonna do this?
I think I, it, it, it's advisable ju- just to do the, the, the chair first and then do the vice chair second.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, we have, by consensus, decided to start new terms every time. There's an election. Is that correct?
Just, uh. My suggestion is that whoever gets elected tonight serves a nine and a half month term.
Yeah.
And it all.
What I'm saying, are we establishing that in two thousand and twenty-four? Whoever gets elected, then, then we, then whoever's chairman then is out and you vote a new, new term.
Whoever, what, whoever's on the commission at that time can make the decision, whatever decision they want.
Yes. We don't want to be consistent. Okay. Makes no sense to me, but, uh. So.
So we have, we have, we have a nomination for, and correct me if I'm wrong, for, for, for two individuals. Uh, current chair Mazza and then Commissioner Jennings. And then I, I, I don't believe there are any more nominations.
That's correct.
Okay, um. Okay, uh, Commissioner Jennings, uh. We're voting for you, right? Right now?
Uh, we're, we're voting for chair.
Correct, yeah, so, yeah.
And you're nominated. So all in favor of, uh, Jennings, or we'll listen to a roll call.
Correct, and, 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 and in this roll call vote, i- 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 it, it won't be a yes or no, rather it will be for a specific person. I.e. either current chair Mazza or Commissioner Jennings for the role as chair.
And we do two votes. Okay, uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Uh, so for chair, um, Dennis Smith, who would you like to vote for?
Jennings.
Okay. Um. Commissioner Jennings, uh, who would you like to vote for?
I'll vote for myself.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Mazza, who would you like to vote for?
Uh, yeah. Me.
Commissioner Wile?
Jennings.
And, uh, Commissioner Hill?
Because it doesn't matter at this point. If Jennings has it. I was gonna vote for John just so he could finish out. Because it doesn't matter at this point, if Jennings has it. I was gonna vote for John just so he could finish out his turn, but you've got the three already, so there you go.
So are we putting you officially?
Yeah, could you, could you, could you vote?
Yeah, put me on John, put me on John.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeff, you have the, you have the gall.
Okay, you reach through the screen and send it to me there, John. Um here you go. Next, we would be taking up the election of Vice Chair. We didn't want, the nominations are now open. Um David, you didn't want Chair, I'm gonna nominate you for Vice Chair.
That's less accurate.
And I will nominate Craig.
Uh are there any other nominations? Kathleen, can you call the roll?
Uh, we need seconds.
Oh, okay. Is there a second to the nomination of Craig to be Vice Chair?
I will if no one else does.
Okay, and is there a second to the nomination of David to be Vice Chair?
Sure, I will, I will.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Kathleen?
Commissioner Smith?
Uh Wile.
Okay. Commissioner Mazza?
Uh Craig.
Commissioner Wile?
Myself.
Chair Jennings?
Uh Wile.
And. Who have I missed?
I didn't think you missed anybody, did you?
We missed me, but I.
You missed your help.
Many apologies, Commissioner Hill, and you're voting for yourself. Okay, so three for David Wile and two for Craig Hill for Vice Chair.
Takes me back to junior high school homeroom when you're not supposed to vote for yourself.
Right.
Um, okay, um congratulations to both of the elected officials. Let's go to now item two, which is communications from the public concerning matters not on the agenda or. For which we have subject matter jurisdiction.
Can I just say thank you, John, for serving as Chair?
Thank you. I'll thank. Thank you again for serving Ja- John as Chair. We seem like we trade this back and forth. Um, okay, uh item two A. Matters, Kathleen, do we have anybody who signed up to speak?
Yes, we have three members of the public that wish to speak, Lonnie Gordon, Pat Healy, and Norman Haney.
Okay, uh call the first one.
Lonnie Gordon?
I don't see Lonnie in the meeting.
Okay, then we'll move on to Pat Healy.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you, Pat.
Okay, uh I want to congratulate the new commissioners. Um, the Malibu Coalition for Slow Growth urges you to follow the Malibu Local Coastal Plan and Municipal Code if it's more protective of Malibu. It's very important to protect Escha to the greatest extent possible. Worldwide, there is only forty four, forty-five percent of the natural world left. Malibu and the Santa Monica.
Uh-oh, I lost you, Pat, I think you got.
You muted yourself, Pat.
Can you hear us, Pat?
I've stopped the clock, so once we get uh her unmuted, we can continue.
Is Andrew can?
Am I unmuted?
Now you are, yeah, go ahead.
Uh where, shall I start again?
Uh forty-four percent of the the natural world is all this way.
Okay, okay, uh sorry about that. Worldwide, there is only forty-five percent of the natural world left. Malibu and the Santa Monica Mountains is one of the most diverse ecosystems in the world, and it's rapidly being destroyed. With each intrusion into chaparral, coastal sage, and riparian habitat, there is a destruction of this unique ecosystem. And the insects and animals that inhabit it inhabit it and depend on it. For example, if you have a ten thousand square foot building pad, the fuel modification results in the destruction of more than four acres of native habitat. Uh then the invasive plants take over, or the land is stripped and it becomes a highway for embers in a wildfire, since there's no native shrubbery to slow down the embers. Um. Let's see. Let me see, I lost, okay. Um, our unique Mediterranean ecosystem, only one of five in the world took thousands of years to evolve. You are the guardians of the system. Malibu has a responsibility to protect its wild and its wild lands. And property owners should be required to follow the codes. Variances for intrusion into Escha should be denied. The wild beauty of Malibu is what drew many of us here to live here in the first place. Malibu residents want um this wild beauty protected and preserved. We're worth, we are urging each commissioner and staff to protect our wildlands to greatest extent possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Uh Norm Hayne, was that the other one, Kathleen?
Yes, we have Norman Haney.
Uh congratulations, commissioners. Um. I I'm I'm not, not sure you're gonna enjoy your your term because it's gonna be a lot of work. And it's clear you're doing it uh for the benefits of the citizens of Malibu, so thank you very much. Um, I have a concern I want to mention tonight. Um, first of all, I want everybody to realize how much I appreciate the staff of the city. Um, they work harder than any other staff uh that I've ever uh been familiar with, and I I've been in. Uh dealing in thirty-seven cities in my career. And this staff is the best I've ever known in terms of responsiveness. And they're doing it shorthanded at this point. I don't know how many members they've lost in the last uh ten months, but it it's been substantial. Uh and I especially appreciate Director Malika. Um, he, he's just an incredible uh individual who knows. Pretty much everything there is to know about um the local coastal program and and the city in general. My concern, however, is about how quickly the initial study was completed. And the delays that have occurred. Basically, it was completed three weeks after it was supposed to have been completed, and then it went to the city for review. And that review should have taken thirty days, which was up on December the twenty-third. It is now almost four weeks later, and it still hasn't completed its review by the different city departments. Um, and and hopefully it'll be completed this week. From then. Uh, it will go to the general public for their review of the initial study and their comments. During that time, it's my understanding that the staff will be able to write the staff recommendation for the hotel project. Um, obviously, I'm hoping that it's approved. And if it is approved, then the estimate with a fifteen percent T O T. Is that it will deliver approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars every month. Basically, every thirty days. And so we've already lost almost two months. And that's costing the city dearly, assuming that it's approved, and it may not be. I mean, I don't want to count my chickens until they hatch. Um. But it is a substantial amount of money uh to the city, and at least. We should get a chance to uh review it and approve it and vote on it. So if there's anything that can be done to move this project on, uh I would, I would appreciate. The uh commission's leadership on that as well as the staffs. Uh again, I'm not blaming the staff for this. I'm I'm simply saying that it should be on someone's priority list to at least follow. Um, the timeframes that that were set. So thank you very much for listening to me, and again, congratulations to the new commissioners and to the old ones that made it. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Um, any further speakers, Kathleen?
No one else has signed up, and I still do not see Lonnie Gordon in the meeting, so.
Okay, let's move on now to item uh two B, Planning Commission and Staff Comments and Inquiries. If Lonnie Gordon shows up, will you please alert me?
We'll certainly do that, yes.
Um, okay, uh planning commissioners, uh comments? I don't see, oh, yes, Craig, I think I briefly saw your hand. There you go. You're mu- you're muted, Craig, there you go.
Yeah, um, it turns out we now have a pretty light agenda tonight, so uh people will indulge me to about five minutes here. I have some comments about the commission process that I think are timely now that we have a a new regime here and a new approach to things. Um. Uh first, I look forward to being one voice among the many here. There's a variety of voices, a lot of experience, different perspectives. So it should be interesting to collaborate in puzzling out the best decisions. Uh while technically we serve at the pleasure of our respective council members. To be clear, I'm not here with marching orders from Council Member Silverstein. And in any case, our fundamental job is not to do what our council members want us to do, but to serve the public interest. And over the years, I've noticed that sometimes on the commission, there's a conceptual tension that arises from implicitly conflating. The public interest with what the public is interested in, and they're not the same thing. If you could add up everything that each member of the public is interested in, you still couldn't call that the public interest because you've left out some issues around safety and environment. Common goods that sometimes people take for granted that no one speaks for. Economists call these externalities. Uh they're they're, because they're not accounted for, they're outside of the transactions that self-interested actors make with each other. Because we conflate those two types of interests, sometimes the decisions have looked like a popularity contest. Or where the loudest voice wins because they seem to have the greatest interest. And certainly there are exceptions. For example, if neighborhood character is in issue, then the comments of neighbors may well be relevant to that. But when no one shows up and the neighborhood seems disinterested, that doesn't mean we can ignore the public interest. The common good still matters, and even if some of those concerns might seem less of a priority than what the applicant wants right now. They might also affect everyone in town just a little bit, such that that they add up to something significant. Impacts like noise or traffic are, they're not a big deal, one incident at a time, but when they affect hundreds of people, it becomes a big deal. So we're here to represent that sort of invisible community. Uh as I said when I first joined the commission, I hope to be strict but fair, to read the language of the law closely, respect the science and the data. And expect that assertions made by staff or applicants or whomever will be supported by solid evidence. And here's an example we can learn from, commission and staff. In the past, there was a case that had a hundred-foot buffer zone. The applicant wanted a variance for only eight feet. And the commission balked and said, no, that's not enough. Can you work with us? And they brought it back and it was, instead of a hundred feet or close to a hundred feet, they went from eight feet to twelve feet. And uh to my mind, that just, something fell through the cracks there. Either the applicant uh should, staff either should have. Been more. Strict in in a sense with the applicant and letting them know what to expect, and the commission probably should have been more clear about what we meant in the first place when we said work with us on this. Um, so. Uh, we've got to pin things down when we can. And similarly, sometimes threads are raised that never get resolved, and sometimes commissioners seem in a rush to get to a decision, any decision. And that creates a tension in the process. There's, there's a balancing between thoroughness and speed. For example, in in another past case, the commission heard an application where one geologist said a certain geological feature might be more than a hundred feet below the surface. And another geologist said, well, we drilled down sixty feet and didn't find anything. And I can't have been the only one to conclude that there was at least forty feet of margin there that both geologists were in agreement on, but the commission didn't catch that. And I think that was maybe because there were too many loose threads on the table, coupled with the concern that we weren't moving fast enough. So I think we can do a better job if we try to be mindful of that tension and try to both get to what's most germane, but also have that little extra bit of patience. Um, and I, so my key point is that I think if there's a way to move methodically that might seem slow. But that might get us to that tighter decision sooner because we're not going around in circles chasing a dozen threads all at once. Um, so moving on a couple of quick questions, this is mainly for Richard. Sort of for a brief progress report. Steve had asked, uh had spoken several times about things related to staff workflow and document management. It's really a couple of things. One is the issue of what, why have files been lost on certain cases, including there was one tonight where I anecdotally heard that there were files lost. With staff having to recreate the work, and also the notion of if there are any changes in a project now, it has to be. Repropagated to all the departments i- in a serial fashion. And that if we had the the whole system digitized, there should be a simpler, more streamlined way to push a button. And have those changes propagated out in a more parallel fashion so that things can get addressed more efficiently. So I just wondered if you have any progress report on um. Those sort of document, document management questions.
If you, so to start with the missing files, um if you. Let me know which one that is, because I wasn't aware of any. I will be looking into it. We are in the process, though a lot of the city files are paper files. And we just don't have the room for them simply, so a lot of files were moved offsite into storage. And we've been slowly as we can bringing them, it's, I say slow, but it's really as fast as we can, given other things that we've been working on. But bringing those back onsite, scanning them and digitizing them so that we don't, we can maintain them ourselves and not rely on offsite storage. And I can tell you, though, that we have uh found that just, you know, anything we have, anytime hard copies, people misfile things. And uh we've been able to find a lot of stuff that had been, you know, missing because of these misfiling issues. But if there's something specific today, I'd like to know about it. I know that, and if it's Decore Edison, I know that staff was looking for that today. I thought that they found the copy, but if not, um, we'll look into that.
Well, but just, just to respond on that quickly, um Steve was talking about something else in the past. I don't know what that was. And then I brought it up now because it was Decore Edison. I was told by the applicant that. Um, not now, but in the recent past, and I think it was in the changeover from one planner to the next. That some files were lost at that point and had to be created, recreated at that point.
I can talk to um DDA and get a understanding of that and actually bring it back to you if you like, uh because, you know, like I said. We log things in into our database, like for the purposes of tracking, so that, for example, if somebody doesn't. If they have a fire department referral missing and they tell us they submitted it, we can go back and look, and. Most of the time, they may tell you they submitted it, but if we don't actually see a received date on it. Um, it's, they, it wasn't submitted to the city, and I'm working on a case right now where someone's telling me that they dropped off a check and plans. To the city, but no check was ever cashed, and nor can they come up with the name of who they dropped it off with, but they're telling me they dropped it off. I do take those seriously. And terms of reviews, we are trying to work with the other departments to do a better job for everybody to utilize the city's database. And yes, when someone changes a project, depending on the nature of that change, it could trigger a re-review by the other departments. And if someone submits to us a revised project, we do ask that they go to the other departments. To ask those departments if it needs to be reviewed again or not, or if the, you know, if they could reuse that previous approval. Um, obviously, it'd be nice to be able to use the previous approval just to be efficient and save time. Uh but oftentimes, we may see a whole building shift or a footprint, a footprint issue. And then now all of a sudden, you've got a septic plot plan that doesn't match the proposed development, and those have become hiccups for us in front of the planning commission. So we would like to try to ensure the best accuracy we can and make sure that everybody's looking at exactly what is being proposed and what it is. That the applicant is seeking approval of, and I'm hopeful that we can get to a place where all departments. And I'm hopeful that we can get to a place where all departments can utilize our database. And, you know, we just do, like you say, something once, uh, rather than having to do it custom for each department as it stands these days.
Well, it does sound like what you described, it, it is already happening in parallel at some level. It's not like it's just going to one department, then on to the next, then on, you are propagating it more efficiently. So that I think, I think, I think you're on the right track, I guess, is the point.
And that's, just to be clear, that is for the planning review. And there is a serial track, if you want, when it comes to the final plan stamp. And that one, we're, we're trying to do something different, but it typically is you get a stamp, uh, from building and safety. And then you take that stamp and you go down to, say, geology, get them to put a stamp on the plans. Then you take those plans, run them over to Bill, uh, to Public Works, get a stamp, and then Environmental Health and usually planning is last. And we're trying to find a way with building and safety to where we can all just digitally stamp those and not have to have the applicant or property owner move the plans through each step of the way. And to be quite honest with you, the problem that we're experiencing, and this is what we're working on with that, is digital is great. Uh, but we're having a hard time protecting the documents to ensure that after, say, building and safety stamps it, there are no changes. Nobody can, if we protect the document at that point, we're having a problem where it precludes future stamps. And so, um, we, we just want to make sure there's no mechanism where something could change between departments.
I have a thought on that, but I, I'll share it with you offline. It's, uh, um, thank you. That sounds really helpful. Uh, one last comment here, on, and this is also mainly for Richard, I think, about SCE's process on the tree trimming stuff. Um, I, I was contacted by a neighbor who'd had just a traumatic experience in December when SCE said they needed to trim the required four feet off their trees to get them away from the lines. And they did that, and then SCE came back and said, no, 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 that's not enough. We, we want to cut down ten feet. And they said, okay, well, let's have a conference and, and negotiation about that. And SCE said, yeah, that's what we need to do. But instead of having the negotiation, they showed up on the day of the nego, the, the scheduled negotiation, they showed up on site with multiple trucks and two sheriffs to keep the peace and proceeded to chop the trees down all the way without any. And I thought at the last resort was that the owners could say, no, 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 you're not coming on. And then SCE would have them sign a waiver, something along those lines. But it just seemed like a really heavy-handed tactic, and I just wondered if, um, if there's any word for the public about, uh, have they changed their policies? Was this a one-off weird? Why did this happen?
Uh, that does, uh, and it does seem unique, actually, because in the past, what I've seen happen is, uh, this mainly, I'll say, Bonzel area, when a neighbor does bring up a concern, our city, uh, arborist, I believe it was, went out and looked at it too. So we had somebody from the city there with an expert opinion to render. Uh, but I'm not, I've actually been speaking to our arborist, and I'm not aware of the arborist being involved in anything, um, i- in your area of Malibu, the eastern end, um, western end, yes. So I, I'm going to talk to the city, uh, arborist about that and see if something did change. Uh, because that's the, my understanding in the past is that there was a, an effort made between the city's arborist and their arborist, SCE arborist, uh, to discuss these areas when concerns came up.
Okay, again, that's something I guess we can talk offline if you, if, to follow up on that. And I'll leave that, I'll leave it there for my comments. Thank you, Jeff.
John? Anything?
I got a couple of things. Um, first, I want to congratulate Richard on becoming the permanent planning director.
Oh, yeah.
That, that'll give us a lot of stability and
Air, air.
Done an excellent job. The second one, there's been all this controversy about who could ask who questions. And I'm, I want, uh, Pat to weigh in on this. I'm under the assumption that we're under the city plan and we can ask questions. These aren't outside of the city's work plan. Or do we have to get permission to ask a question? Not in a meeting, I mean, you know, doing our research.
So, and, and, and Richard, jump in there. So i- is a question whether or not you can, you know, you're preparing for an item or, or researching an issue in the city, and you just want to reach out to myself, Richard, or, or some other member of, of staff a- a- and ask a question?
Yeah, because apparently the city's limited. If it's not on the work plan, you can't, you can't get anything that takes an hour, more than an hour. Some of these take more than that to answer. And, uh, I assume we're part of the work plan, we're part of the, we're part of the system, but, uh, if we're not allowed to ask questions, then
Everything that's on our, everything that's on our agenda is part of the work plans. I don't think you have to worry about contacting staff, uh, about anything that's on any of our agendas and, or past, present, or future.
Yes, I think.
Patrick?
Yeah, correct. I mean, that is, you know, I'm, this is kind of the, not the first I, I, I'm hearing of it, but I would, I was operating under the assumption that any kind of, as, as Chair Jennings said, anything that's on the agenda, anything planning-related, anything upcoming, um, of course, we would want, you know, the commissioners to be as well-informed as they possibly can. Um, but your question and, and you referenced that does give me now, I guess, a, a, a bit of a pause. So, so if you would indulge me, I, you know, I would simply state, you know, please let me, you know, research that more thoroughly. Uh, and, you know, I can potentially get back to you at the, at, at the very next meeting or offline, and then, of course, I'll turn it over to Richard, see if he
I'd appreciate it at the next meeting because, uh, three commissioners in the past have been told they couldn't ask questions. Um, which was reversed by the city attorney, but that had another connotation. So, uh, please come back to us on that next meeting.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yeah.
You guys, uh, you guys, you commissioners, are more than welcome to ask us questions because those, as, uh, as Chair Jennings just pointed out, these are items, uh, that are on an agenda, they're calendared. You're asking questions that are, you know, to resolve some sort of issue, conflict, something that you noticed in the staff report. The one-hour limitation, uh, was something that was primarily targeted towards the city council members on asking the city manager's office to look into some sort of project item or something outside the, the scope of what the council voted on as a group uh, for this, the, the city to focus their work efforts on and time on. And so, for example, asking us questions about projects is totally allowed. Uh, and, you know, please feel free to reach out to me if there's, there's something, uh, comes up and you have questions. It's, you know, like I said, it's, it's the council, um, members, if the, say, the mayor comes up with something uh, that he would like the city manager to investigate and perhaps give him feedback on, so we could present it at a council meeting, some sort of pet project or whichever it may be. Uh, but that's not what takes place here. Uh, and if, you know, if there's something that the commission wants, uh, staff to look into, uh, you know, that as Commissioner Hill just done, had done, that, that's fine. We can do that.
Okay, and then the last one is also for Pat. We, we haven't had, um, what, was that training we're supposed to have every year or something on, uh?
Brown Act?
Brown Act, yeah. I'm losing it. Uh, but the other thing I wonder about is I think we need uh, a written policy on recusal, because we now have a, and we haven't had, uh, as far as I can remember, ever, a professional in the construction business on the planning commission. Uh, and how do we treat that as far as past clients, future clients, if we pass something and then uh, they bid on the project and win it? How is all that going to be taken, taken into account as we consider all these projects? Um, it's like having an architect on the, on the, uh, planning commission. What do we do when his customer comes up? Um, so I think we need that in writing now, so we can, we don't have to, you know, go through a drill every time something comes up like that.
It, it's, I mean, it, to, to the extent that it, it likely is in writing in the form of the Fair Political Practices Commission regulations. Um, you kind of touched on a few different issues there. There's sources of income, potential sources of income, architects have a the, the, the concept is similar, but architects, for whatever reason, are treated slightly differently. Um, and so while, you know, that's, you know, I would encourage anyone, if they ever had a conflict question, please, y- y- ask me immediately. That's something that our office takes extremely seriously. And, 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 and we will, you know, investigate it fully, give you kind of all the background law and, you know, the FPPC even issues kind of opinion. So we can research that and kind of find a, you know, similar situations. Uh, but for a written, formal recusal policy, I'm not, I, I've, I've personally never really seen one only because those, it's kind of already written in the, in the FPPC to the Fair Political Practices Commission regulations and government code.
Well, can you address specifically Dennis's situation? Uh, and, and because we're going to have every single meeting, we're going to have projects that could potentially be ex-customers or future customers. And, and then we don't want to go through this every single meeting on every single item. Uh, that's why I want to get some ground rules, so we don't have to.
Yeah, sure. And, and, you know, Commissioner Smith, you know, please, I am, you know, here, you know, a- a- at, at your disposal. So please let me know. And, and Commissioner Mazza, to that extent, I mean, i- i- it's hard for me to say right now to say, hey, here's the blanket rule. Um, I can assure you, I'm very well-versed in, 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 in this area. So any, you know, just going off of that, you know, as I said before, there's rules for sources of income, i.e. past customers. There's amounts, there's dates, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, it's, it, it likely will, you know, unfortunately be a case-by-case analysis. Once again, that my, my office, staff, and, you know, and Commissioner Smith will, 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 will address.
So, how do you address, just, let me get my mind a little straight. Am I ever going to know? When I approach an item, uh, you, you approve an item and then the contractor gets his, his, his contract. That's the way it happens. So things happen after we act. Um, how do we address that? That's what I'd like to know. And in general, I guess there's other things that come up, but virtually every house we approve could be eligible to be contracted by a planning commissioner.
Right, and, 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 and once again, th- there are rules that, you know, I, you know, don't quote me on this. It's, it's kind of, you know, it, it is somewhat legalese, if, 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 if it's reasonable, that, that there could be an impact on, on his or her finances. Once again, that may not be verbatim, but, I mean, there is language that, that, that addresses this. And, you know, that type of hypothetical, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm, you know, just kind of pontificating here, but that, that will likely be unfortunately a case-by-case basis, uh, you know. Yeah.
So let me get you right. Every single meeting, we have a CVP. I got to ask you that question.
No, i- i- that, 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 that would be between, you know, myself and, and, and Commissioner Smith and whether or not Commissioner Smith has a disqualifying financial interest in that item. And so you won't have to ask anything. Commissioner Smith will, you will have to make that decision with, once again, our, our kind of, you know, help and guidance. And, and, and he can, you know, he, he will have to decide whether or not to recuse himself before that, before that item is heard.
Okay, and then how do you follow up later? If it recus, and, and if you did not recuse and then had financial remuneration?
I, yeah, I, I mean, that would, I, it's, that's, that's really, really hard for, for, for me to answer right now. I mean, the, the, the Fair Political Practice Commission does put the onus on the elect, on the official, i.e. Commissioner Smith here. Um, so, you know, should, should that body feel that something untoward ha- had happened? You know, they would kind of be the, 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 the investiga, the investigatory body behind that. Myself, the city attorney's office would not, you know, you know, we would not be responsible for enforcing that. However, we would, you know, take that into consideration, of course, for future projects. And, you know, once again, this is a kind of a collaborative approach with, with Commissioner Smith versus a kind of, you know, a more, you know, I, I, you know, I, I don't know, you know, a more, you know, policing mentality.
Okay, I learned that. Okay, okay, no, let's, look, um, we don't have a much of an agenda here, but, uh, one of the things that, uh, I am thinking might be a good idea because, um, in addition to the public interest, we also have to make decisions, uh, based on people who have come before us. People whose, uh, who are spending enormous amounts of money that it takes to try and build anything in Malibu. And, uh, I feel it's our, one of our responsibilities is to try to deal with them in a timely fashion uh, as quickly as we can and as thoroughly as we can, but also to, to, to get through our projects. And, uh, uh, one of the things we might help in that regard is to move items like item two B, Commissioner comments, from the beginning of the agenda to the end of the agenda. When in fact, we've gone through and have already dealt with the issues that the people are before us, and then we can have all these comments that we want. In the meantime, are there comments from Dennis? Do you want to have a comment?
Yeah.
Do you have any comments to make?
Yes, thank you.
You're muted. Go ahead. No, you're, you're okay. I can hear you.
Okay, um, well, first I wanted to say thank you, uh, Councilman Grisante for nominating me. This is quite an honor. Um, I've sat down in that, as I said earlier, sat in that front row for ten and a half years. And, uh, I paid attention and, uh, I, I believe I can do a good job. And I've had a lot of support, obviously, from my, my family, and there are some really good people in this town that have, uh, called me or text me to tell me, you know, congratulations, and possibly you may have to duck. I guess this is my first duck. And, um, I, I'm, I'm just really happy to be here. I, I'm honest, I am. I'm part of the fabric here in town and I do a good job. Now, I knew this was coming, so let me answer what, what Commissioner Mazza has on his mind. Um, first of all, the, i- if I were that lucky to get all the work in town, then I probably wouldn't have time to be doing this, but that's not how it works. And it's really pretty cut and dried about how this works. I can't do work on something that comes before us. I can't do work if we approve it. I can't go get that job. I can't do a lot of stuff. And as Councilman Grisante said during the nomination, I'm giving up a little bit of money because this is important to me. I'm part of the community. I want to do my part to try and help there. And I, I will, I would, I would never throw this out the window. I've worked really hard for my eleven years that I've been here to do a good job, good, honest work, and people know what I do. I am not going to put myself in that position that somebody's going to ask me, whoa, did you do this? Or, oh, how's that going? And, and I'm not going to do that. So I have to give up a little to sit in the seat, and I'm willing to do that. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to be caught in that. That's not going to happen. I know what I can do and what I can't do. It's really, it's really pretty simple. So, thank you.
David, have you got any comments to make?
No, I mean, I think this is what disclosures are for. And, I mean, when we're considering a project, if someone has something to say, that's when they say it. And I, you know, I didn't, I've recused myself from a project simply where I'm too close a friend of the person involved in it, or it's a real estate company that has a family connection, even if there's no financial connection that I have personally. And I think the idea, as Pat was saying, is if there are connections that you know about, you disclose them. And if the, the city attorney thinks that that's an issue, they, they raise it. And, uh, you know, I think we're all good people here. We all know when we do need to disclose something. Uh, and obviously, it's better to be overly inclusive than the other way around. And, um, you know, it, it starts off as a matter of trust, but it's, you know, there's underlying law that deals with it. So I, I, it's one of these things where you know it when you see it.
Okay, Craig, you had your hand up?
Yeah, um, just two things. In response to your comment about moving comments to the end, I think sometimes we may have responsive comments to the public, and I don't know that we'd want to have them have to wait all night. So I guess I'd be in favor of keeping it upfront. But on this issue, I, I, I've been approached by a couple of people saying, would you work for me as an expediter and help me get, get some green building done in here? They look at me and they, I don't know, I've, some of the, the greener types in town trust me. And, and so I had a conversation with Trevor about this. Could I be an expediter and be on the planning commission and just have to recuse on, on just obviously the projects that I was involved in? And he said, no, categorically, I could not be on the commission and be an expediter at the same time. It's a general conflict of interest. So that raises a question, how, how is, do you, how do you distinguish an expediter from a builder? How do you distinguish Patrick? How do you distinguish Patrick's comment here from what Trevor told me? It seems like this is a discussion maybe to have. Um, and maybe it's an agenda item, then we shouldn't be talking about it all night. But now we've heard two different things. So there you go.
All right. So let's move on with the business.
Can I make one last comment, Jeff? I just want to tell you, uh, has nothing to do with, I I've known you for years, and you sit in the front row, et cetera. I have nothing to do with this trust. What I was really asking is, we end up in the in these meetings getting bogged down in all kinds of stuff. And I just want to make everything plain upfront. So we don't have to go through it all the time. And that's all I was asking for is absolutely nothing to do with your character or anything else.
Okay, here we go. Let's, um, let's move on to item, to item three, which is the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar. B one is approval of minutes. B two is a de minimis waiver. Anybody want to pull anything from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull three B two.
Okay, John, three B two. Uh, does anyone want to, um, uh, pull three B one? Then I'd like a motion on three B one.
I'm moving to accept three B one.
Okay, uh, I got John with David, with, uh, David as second, is that all right?
Sure.
Okay, uh, that, uh, Kathleen, we call the roll on, uh, three B one.
And then and then apologies, Chair Jennings, just briefly, unless the two, Commissioner Hill and Commissioner Smith reviewed the previous meeting and then double checked it against the minutes, I would advise you that you guys cannot vote on the approval of the minutes from last meeting.
Right, right. So let's just take it, first of all, uh, uh, so did either of you sit and listen to the recording of the previous, uh, uh, meeting that's being addressed here, January four?
I per- I I saw, I participated, watched it. I don't know that, but I haven't read the minutes, so.
Okay, fine. Well, then you're, you you can't vote on it then. And, uh, let's call the roll, Kathleen, for just the, just the previously sitting, uh, commissioners.
Are we calling, um, as abstentions for the two commissioners or is that a recusal?
No, it's not a recusal. It would be an abstention.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Maza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes. Unanimous, or with two abstentions. Um, all right, that that brings us to item three B two. John, this is your item. You want to, uh, staff report or do you just have questions?
Uh, no, I just have questions. The first question is, is I don't think we can consider this tonight. Because it's improperly noticed, dramatically improperly noticed. Um, number one, the item, uh, staff report reports that it was issued April twenty third, two thousand and twenty. Eleven months ago, ten months ago. Okay, uh, then it the every day in here is screwed up. Then the project timeline on the de minimis waiver is incorrect. It says it was reported to us on January fourth. And there's various other items that make it inappropriate for us to approve because it's wrong. Uh, now that I hope is enough because the the real problem is the appeal period is has expired long time ago. And everybody has the right to appeal. So if if in fact it was approved, the notice of determination was also listed as January seventh. Appeal period's passed. Okay, so nobody can appeal. So this this staff report is just wrong. And not to do with the facts of the case, which we're not supposed to spend a lot of time discussing. But there's quite a few questions here. You have two, a house and a guest house. You have a a septic tank or a, uh, this is asking to give a de minimis waiver for a house that burned down in the septic tank. But it never mentions the other house, and the fact that it had a septic tank, and I'm assuming it burned down, uh, not mentioned. So is this a serial development to develop two projects or one? Uh, are we going to hear the other one? That's that's a fundamental question. Can you come in and and authorize a septic tank or a septic system for one house just to make it bigger? And then have another one come along and say, well, we don't need one because there's nothing wrong with it. It's the same project. It's a burnout. It's a Woolsey fire.
Yeah, so you're really getting pretty deep in the weeds on this thing.
Yeah, okay. So that, but my main objection is it violates every rule in the book as far as noticing.
Okay, Richard, do you have any, uh, comments you'd like to make before we open a staff report on this?
Certainly. And actually, we were gonna pull it, uh, as well with staff, just to clarify the dates. Because yes, in the agenda report that precedes the DMW, the third paragraph on the first page has the wrong date, April twenty third, two thousand and twenty. It says that the planning director will issue the de minimis waiver. Uh, so we acknowledge that. And then also, on page three of the staff report, uh, there is a date there, planning commission reporting, it says January fourth. However, the next paragraph down states that the, uh, notice of posting was posted uh, to be approved, uh, explaining that the project would be heard and approved by the city on the nineteenth of January with today's date. So there was a typographical error. However, the public notices were done correctly and Jessica can further elaborate on that if needed. Uh, we, the the site was posted properly. In addition, uh, the only folks that were made aware, uh, to my knowledge, and Jessica can confirm of this issue with the date. The only people to receive this report were the applicant and they, uh, they're aware of it and they they don't have any issues. And then also the planning commission. We did not have any interesting, interested parties or anybody else that was to receive this report. So to my knowledge, there there, we we did not deprive somebody of the ability uh, to come and speak this evening. So, uh, once again, Pat can go into that a bit further. Uh, we did discuss this earlier today. And then also on the issue of what is being approved. This is only for the house, which was in existence prior to the fire and burned in the fire. And Jessica can also elaborate on this. The owner is putting that house back. I believe they're also doing the ten percent addition. And this septic system is only to serve that house. Uh, yes, when it was reviewed by the environmental safety department, they did receive, uh, they looked at both the house and also a septic system for a guest house. However, we, uh, as explained on the footnote on the bottom of page one, that second system is not up for discussion or not part of, uh, the approval tonight. My approval on this de minimis waiver, uh, did not cover that system because that system, in the opinion of the planning department, does not qualify for a de minimis waiver. Because that was not in existence prior to the fire. That's going to be a new second unit. The owner is aware of that. They're going to be applying for a coastal development permit. And that permit, so that we prevent an issue with serial development, uh, that permit will be for both the structure and the septic system which serves that structure. So just once again, since that is new, wasn't there before the fire, it's going to come before you as new development. And then lastly, uh, these de minimis waivers, really, we're here tonight just for reporting. And not, this is not an appealable decision. Unless I'm missing something in the code, we're here for reporting. And should there be an issue with the reporting, then of course, that's what the commission does. Uh, they can ask us to bring it back, as they have done before, uh, for a, uh, regular permit. But, uh, tonight is really just a reporting.
The, um, the the, when you started your your first sentence, uh, Richard, you said you planned on pulling it yourself. Are are is staff's intention to pull this or or are we, or or not?
Uh, it was our intention to pull it so that we could explain the errors in the dates.
To pull it? Okay, I thought not not to pull it off the agenda.
No, no, just, we wanted to make sure that we discussed the errors in the dates today and resolved that. Uh, so that it was understood that we could lay a clean record down. Pat, as I mentioned, can jump in on this. We wanted to explain how those dates, uh, would, if any, they had an effect on the decision.
Okay, got it. Let's have a staff report then.
I just a little bit elaborate on to what Richard has said regarding, um, the septic, I think it's the main question. Um, the septic system for the, uh, additional guest house that's being proposed or secondary dwelling unit that will be done. There's already a coastal development permit that is being processed for that application. And that secondary system will be processed with that application, with that CDP application is not part of this review or this de minimis waiver. It's to serve the single family residence only. And that's clarified in the footnote of the staff report as well as within a spec- a specific condition towards the end of the report.
Okay, that concludes your report.
Yes, thank you.
All right, for, um, any ex party disclosures?
No.
Anybody? I don't see a hand up. No?
I I walk the site, uh, on my own.
Okay, uh, Dennis, anything?
No.
John?
No, I just want to make some comments.
And, uh, uh, Craig, I don't see you. Where are you, Craig?
Yeah, no disclosure.
Okay. Okay, uh, so, uh, the applicant, is the applicant, uh, here, Kathleen?
We do not have anyone signed up to speak. I'll check and see. We have the applicant here. I don't know if Jessica knows who that contact is.
Hey, do I don't see them in the waiting room or see them on the meeting.
Is there anybody else that has signed up to speak on the item?
No, sir. No one else.
Okay, that being the case, we will have opened and closed the public area and we'll come back to the commission table. John, you have a comment?
Yeah, my, my real comment is by law, this has already been signed. We're accepting it. And it's wrong. Okay? We cannot change that tonight. It's a done deal. It's already been done. We do not have the authority to change, uh, a consent item. So unless we pull this for a regular hearing, we can't accept it because we cannot uh, staff cannot issue an incorrect, uh, CDP or a a de minimis waiver. It's becomes part of the public record. And the the comment that the public didn't get to look at it, well, they get this staff report, the numbers are all wrong, and they and they say, basically, it's too late. You got ten days. And so there's no possible way they can do it. So as a matter of record, we cannot change a consent item. And as a matter of record, this one is wrong. As staff has admitted. So we have to pull it. Or, I don't know if you can continue it or not, but, um, we can't accept an incorrect legal document. This is not something that we're approving. This is something that we're accepting that's already happened. Or they're asking us to.
That's right. This is something that I'm gonna have to get some some, uh, help from counsel here because my understanding is on the de minimis waiver, the idea was it was for for septic systems that were damaged as part of the Woolsey fire. And that, uh, without the de minimis waiver being added following the the fire, uh, a full CDP would be required to replace the septic system. Uh, the de minimis waiver was put into place in order to avoid the necessity of having to get a full, uh, CDP. But the way it reads as far as, uh, uh, as far as I'm aware, is that, um, it is approval by staff. And it comes to us, it's reported to us, and only in the event that the planning commission decides that, uh, the de minimis waiver is improperly granted. Uh, and and that a full CDP is required, uh, is that that's our only function. Somebody, you know, counsel, help me out here. Uh, you have an interpretation on on what we can and can't do in terms of, in response to, uh, this report?
Well, correct. And 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 Richard, I I guess I may need, no. I muted?
There you go. Now you're back on now.
Okay, got it. And so the 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 only, now, if, first, I'll 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 deal with the 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 staff report that lists April twenty third, two thousand and twenty, you know, will issue. Now, that is, I I I agree, it is internally inconsistent in that it says the date prepared January seventh. It has the future tense, and then it has the meeting date, January ninth, two thousand and twenty one. If if i- if that is sufficient, if if the commission thinks that that is sufficiently confusing to the public, you guys are well within your right to 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 either continue it or pull it based on that. Legally, with with all of the factors considered, that staff report and our office's opinion is 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 acceptable. It's not ideal, but the the meeting date is listed, the date prepared is listed, the April twenty third, two thousand and twenty, likely a a holdover from a previous report, et cetera. Going on now to the de minimis, the actual de minimis waiver, the 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 only error that 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 I understand occurred, and Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, is once again, comes on page three of ten, where it says the planning commission reporting, and it lists January fourth, two thousand and twenty one, instead of today's date, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Now, that January nineteen, nineteen, two thousand and twenty one date is is also listed elsewhere in this de minimis waiver. So 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 no, I I I I do not think that the January fourth, two thousand and twenty one listing, once again, while not ideal, makes this legally invalid. Um, you know, typos unfortunately happen. Um, and 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 something like that in terms of, all this was doing is, this was listing when the report, when the planning commission was getting the report, and it being inconsistent within that de minimis, de minimis waiver, while once again, not ideal, to me is not dispositive, nor does it, you know, you know, ruin the integrity or legality of this waiver.
Well, my question is a little different. Um, the the you suggested that we might, we might continue or pull it for some reason. It's it's just a report to us. It my understanding of the code is that all we can do is say, okay, no, you've got to come back with a full CDP. Is that correct or incorrect? I mean, because if we if we continue it, so what? It just comes back as another report. Uh, I I don't, I I I I'm struggling to get the the scope of our discretion with regard to how we can handle these de minimis waivers, because it's come up several times now in the past, uh, in relation to, uh, what our role is here. I mean, it's reported to us. And and so then what? You know, we say, no, we don't like the report. So the only option I can see is to come back with a full CDP. Forget the de minimis waiver. You got to come back with a full CDP for, uh, for your septic repair. Is that, am I wrong or right on that? That's all I'm trying to come up with.
It it it, and so, no, my understanding is that 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 this, that these items can also be continued and have been continued previously, correct, Richard?
I would need to check that with the planner. Jessica, is this the first time this is here?
This is the first time, yes.
I can remember in twelve years of none ever been been being continued.
Now, that's because before, two thousand and eighteen or twenty eighteen, there weren't any because de minimis waivers only came in after that. But that's like, my point is, continuing it does what? Is it going to be resubmitted with a new new report? Uh, i- if if we continue, I, my thought is if we continue something, it simply comes back on the next agenda in exactly the same form it's in here now.
Why can't it be withdrawn?
Because it's the applicant's job to withdraw it if they want to withdraw it.
Okay, well, then I think we've got a problem here because the public, and then Patrick, I'd like to weigh in on this. The public has a right to comment on anything that comes before us.
Well.
And and this basically tells them, your time's up. Forget it. You got no way to do anything. And, uh, twelve days have passed. We give ten. That's all we give, and they're calendar days. They're not working days. So the public reads this and goes, oh, Jesus, I missed that one. Okay, um, the public has a right too. That's why we have these hearings. So I don't think it's proper for us to allow a improperly staff-reported, improperly written de minimis waiver to pass through as a city permit.
All right, I get, I get what you're saying, John. My question is, I'm trying to find a, a path out of the fact that there were some typographical errors in this report. Patrick says that he feels that it's still legally adequate, but I, you know, the best of all possible worlds, we don't have typographical errors, but what's the path out? Does it come back, Richard? Does it, Richard and Patrick, does it come back with the corrected dates? Does it, do you change the dates? What, what happens? What's the path out of this problem that John has raised?
That's what I was going to check with you, Pat. Could we just simply change the dates and bring it back?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any, any issue with that. That, that seems like a very appropriate, you know, solution to this problem.
All right. In that case, I suggest that you, that staff recommend that this map, that this item be pulled and, and, and be brought back, continue to a, to a subsequent date. This is a, this is this is weird in terms of the procedures because we, we, we really don't have the power to continue with ourselves, but, but what the heck, let's just get out of it, would continue it to the next available date, which would be what, Richard?
Yeah, there's I would say we could bring it back to you on, at the next meeting, the first of February.
Okay, then my motion would be to continue this matter to the first of February. Your second?
I'll second it.
Is there further discussion? All in favor? Yeah, call the roll please, Kathleen, I'm sorry.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
I'm going to abstain because I agree with Jeff. We don't have the right to do that.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Okay, motion passes. That concludes item 3B2. We're now on to what's left of our poor tattered agenda here. 4A is continued, 4B is continued, 5A is continued. 5B is continued. That brings us to 5C where there's an issue of whether we're going to continue this. So 5C is, we're now at a, on item 5C. This is appeal number 20-012. This is an appeal of the planning director's approval of planning clearance number 20-017 for the Tesla Information Center and showroom. John, before we get too deep into the, the problems with with the substance of this matter, you, you indicated a desire to continue this item. You want to state your reasoning again?
Yes. This is an important item in interpretation of the LIP. And the applicant sent in brief comments and then follow them up with more comments with supporting items. She turned those in Friday. I never got, I, I get a couple hundred emails a day, so I, I open everything Kathleen sends me. I don't necessarily open everybody else's at the same time. And I never got Pat's comments. Okay? And I think somebody else reported they were sent out late this afternoon. I didn't get those. I don't know how many people got them. But to wait that amount of time, two to three hours before a meeting on a substantial item with substantial comments and the attachments showing the laws and everything doesn't give the applicant a, a fair hearing, in my opinion. And I don't know if anybody else has checked, whether they got a, a email from the city. I did not get one.
So John, is it, is it, what you're telling us is that you, there are still items that were to be submitted, that were submitted by Pat, the appellant, that, that you have still not received?
No, I, I, she, she called me today to ask me what I thought and I said about what? And she sent them to me.
Okay, you have seen them? You have seen them now?
I have seen them, but the public, they're not part of the public record as far as I know. And I don't think anybody else has seen them. Outside of maybe some of you guys got them, I certainly didn't. Now, if you have one that has my name on it, fine, I'll go along with that, but I, I haven't seen one.
Okay.
I do not think that, that it's proper to wait 24 hours to send a, a comment out that important. Now, we always get these guys that come in an hour before the hearing, lawyers do it all the time. That's their problem if I don't get to read it, you know, I don't have time. But I want to read, this is substantial issue. We're changing the LIP as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, John, then, then maybe the best way to handle this, rather than going through a full hearing and discussion on it and then having a motion to continue would be to start off with a motion to continue the item and see whether that's something that the commission wants to support.
Okay, I will make that motion, I hope, and before it's voted that somebody looks to see if they have a copy of the email from the city this afternoon addressed to all the commissioners, because if not, the public has not been given proper notice. And it's not a matter of record.
I, I take it that the documents you're talking about is, is the one that Pat sent out headed rebuttal to the staff report and, and she, she said that, that her documentations was, was put at the back of the staff report. And so she wanted to bring it forward to everybody's attention. That's the document you're talking about, right?
Yeah, she sent it to me, addressed only to the commissioners. And that's a big deal. You, it's got to go into the public record and out to the, out to the public if they want to see it.
Okay, I get your point. All right.
Eric Jennings, if I just want to confirm that once we did receive that documentation this afternoon, Kathleen can confirm, we did distribute it publicly. Is that correct, Kathleen?
Yes, about five minutes after we received it, we made sure we distributed it publicly. And it should be available for the public to view, but it was later in the afternoon because that's the first we knew about it.
Does that have my name on it?
It does. I didn't redistribute it to the parties who had, it had already been distributed to.
Well, I didn't get it. So something's wrong with the computers.
Okay. So your motion is what, John?
To continue to the next meeting.
Is there a second to the motion? Okay, the motion dies for failure to achieve a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is there further conversation on the, or discussion rather, on the motion to continue this item to the next agenda?
Yeah, I got Friday's thing. I did not get what, something that supposedly sent late this afternoon. I did not get that.
Just to clarify, Commissioner Hill, that is correct. What happened was, and Kathleen can correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like we received, so I received the email this afternoon from one of the commissioners. And then what we did is Kathleen then distributed it to anybody who was not on that list. And it appears that it was sent to all of the commissioners and because of that, she only sent it out to the public, members of the, the applicant team and interested parties and made it public correspondence. It was not resent to the commissioners. So what you got on Friday is the subject of this discussion.
That, that is correct. It was considered duplicative, but I could see where the source of the email could have been more to the attention of Commissioner Mazza had it come from the city, which is generally our normal procedure. But in the interest of time and not confusing it to be a, you know, duplicative information. We have at times just sent it to the parties who had yet to receive it. We can revisit that if it's better.
Is there further discussion on the motion to continue?
Well, I just want to say that you have two commissioners who did not receive an official copy. And I don't know who read it, whatever copy Pat sent out, but you got two. That's quite significant.
Is there further discussion? Good. Kathleen called the roll.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
You there, Dennis?
Yes, yes.
What's the vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Um, no, but okay, the motion passes four to one. That concludes item 5C. We're now on to item 5D. This is coastal development permit 21-001, the first one of the new year. An application to implement ordinance number 427 Malibu Municipal Code, Chapter 10 dot 18, through installation of associated regulatory signage at the city boundary to restrict the parking of oversized vehicles for a period of not more than 72 hours citywide. We have a staff report, please.
Chair Jennings?
Yeah.
May I request that we consider D and E together, even though we may need to take separate votes, but the issues seem essentially identical.
Uh, that seems like a reasonable way to go. Is there any objection to considering D and E together? Staff, you have a problem with that?
No, we do not. It's just important to us that because they are separate permits, that we just make certain that when it's time to call the vote, we call the vote on one, vote on that, and then call the vote on the second one.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that. Staff report, please. On D and E. I bet, maybe I better announce that we're doing E as well. This is, we're, and along with 5D, we are also considering item 5E, coastal development permit number 21-002. An application to do the same things that I just said, except that these are slightly different locations within the city. Okay, staff report, please.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you see the PowerPoint? Yes, you can. Okay, great. Um, the items we, this evening you just stated are two coastal development permits. One is appealable to the coastal commission and one is not. They are necessary to install road signs at each of the major entrances to the city. And in, in order to alert drivers entering the city to the oversized vehicle parking restrictions implemented with ordinance 427, which was adopted by the city council in December 2017. Very briefly, ordinance 427 added Chapter 10.18 to Title 10 of the municipal code to establish citywide oversized vehicle restrictions. These regulations prohibit the parking of commercial oversized vehicles on city streets and limit the parking of non-commercial vehicles to two hours between the hours of 12 AM and 5 AM and establish a permit program for residents who need to park oversized vehicles on a city street for up to 72 hours. This ordinance was adopted to address the long-term storage and operation of both non-commercial and commercial oversized vehicles on city streets near public access points, which can create safety hazards and also disrupt access to and block the views of public amenities and resources. To be more clear, the residential parking permit program is in place so that residents may park a specific trailer or an oversized vehicle on city streets within 1,000 feet of the owner's residence for a period of not more than 72 hours. Otherwise, non-commercial oversized vehicles and trailers may park along public streets for only two hours between the hours of 12 AM and 5 AM before the vehicle must be at least 1,000 feet from the location at which it was parked. And oversized commercial vehicles have the same rules. They just don't have that time window component. So at no time can they park for more than two hours along public streets. Next slide, please. Okay. Um, the regulations only affect oversized vehicles, not normal passenger cars and trucks. As you can see here, an oversized vehicle is one which exceeds 23 feet in length or exceeds 80 inches in width or exceeds 82 inches in height. Oversized vehicles do not include pickup trucks, which are taller than 82 inches or wider than 80 inches, provided that they do not have a camper shell, which exceeds the height of the cab and overhangs the sides of the vehicles. In addition, unattached or attached trailers may not park on city streets if they meet the definition of an oversized vehicle. Next slide, please. Um, several types of vehicles are exempt from these parking restrictions, including those doing government agency or utility-related business. That includes emergency vehicles authorized by California Highway Patrol. Commercial oversized vehicles that are making pickups or deliveries in a residential district over, commercial oversized vehicles that are there for the purposes of authorized construction and a vehicle that complies with the residential permit program, which I mentioned previously. Next slide, please. Any person violating the provisions of this ordinance shall be subject to fines and penalties per the MMC, which was updated again with that ordinance. Next slide, please. The implementation of a parking restriction along public streets is a two-part process. One, the adoption of an ordinance, which has already been completed. And two, which is what we're doing here tonight, pursuant to the local coastal program approval of a coastal development permit to install the necessary signage to implement the parking restrictions or regulations. This subject application and the subsequent CDP 21-001 and 21-002 serve as this step two part of the process. And is it required, is required in order to evaluate the project's effects on coastal resources, including access to the beach and other amenities. Next slide, please. Regulatory signage notifying travelers of the restrictions on the parking of oversized vehicles citywide are proposed to be placed on all major highways or roadways with entrances to the city. As I just mentioned, CDP number 21-001 is not appealable and would permit signs at the roads listed here. And CDP number 21-002 is appealable because the signs are located within the appeal jurisdiction at the roads listed under there. I do have maps available showing where each of these signs will go if the commissioners are interested in seeing that. Next slide, please. So with staff, that concludes my presentation. Our recommendation is to adopt both coastal development permits. I am available for questions as well as Richard.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a question that was raised by the Coastal Commission staff's letter of January 15th. They say that in their view, item 5, the first one, item 5D, is it? In fact, is appealable to the coastal commission and it should be re-noticed for that reason. I note that, that at least in terms of the dispute that was going on over the, the gate gatehouse that was going to be down in Mesquito Canyon, that staff was saying that, well, once there's a suggestion that maybe it's a suggestion that maybe it should be, uh, it really is appealable to the coastal commission, then that there's this process that you have to go through where the executive director ultimately decides, uh, whether or not it is appealable to the coastal commission. And then in that case, they have to re-notice or don't re-notice depending on what he says. So my question is, why isn't the the paragraph of the commission's letter to us, uh, dispositive on this issue? Why, how can we move forward on this if the coastal staff says that, uh, you're wrong? It is within our appealable jurisdiction.
Pat can jump in and, uh, help me with my explanation in case there's something I missed. But a critical difference between, uh, what happened here was that the Sycamore Gate, we requested a determination from them uh, because of a challenge raised by outside agency, not the coastal commission. In this case, no outside agency or party, uh, came to request a determination. The city didn't request a determination. And it's because of that difference and in fact, perhaps explain in a bit more detail in our discussions this afternoon with the city attorney's office, that was the difference is that uh, the coastal commission was rendering an opinion here, oh, based on a conclusion that what makes this appealable is the fact that it leads to public resources, whereas the appealable determination is based on the actual location of development, not what it leads to.
Correct. And then, and then just, just to follow up, that, that, that's found in section thirteen point one zero point one of the, of the city's LIP subsection B kind of deals with whether or not the applicant or an interested person or the city challenges and then wishes, you know, the coastal commission to make that determination.
Okay, so you're satisfied that there's not a problem there. All right. Other questions of staff? John?
Yeah, I just on that last question, why do we care? Nobody cares. Why do we want to, uh, tell the coastal commission they're wrong? I don't know who wants to answer that, but you know, if you poke the bear at the wrong time, you know, uh, it makes no, it makes no difference.
Well, I mean, it, 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 I, you know, I would say that it, it, it does make a difference in terms of, not that, not that it does make a difference, but that the, the coastal act and the LIP kind of set forth where the appealable jurisdiction is. And, and here the, you know, the coastal commission is, and Richard, you know, you, I know you've been interfacing with them a bit more than myself, is, is attempting to expand that. And so, you know, this idea that, well, even though it's not in the appealable jurisdiction, it may impact something in the appealable jurisdiction. It, to me, is, it, it is a bit of a, of a, of a departure, you know, from, from what was typically and regularly handled.
Now, could they make the point like they did on the, uh, the gate that this inhibits access? The beach is accessed by Malibu Canyon, for example. Can you drive a bus here under this law?
You can, um, and that's part of the argument that we, uh, were making, um, both when the ordinance was adopted and in these, uh, CDP staff reports is that, um, they're really contributing to providing more access in that they, um, don't allow uh, oversized vehicles which can take up, you know, multiple spaces, um, to park overnight or for an extended period of time. So you can certainly still park uh, in any of the, uh, spaces available now. You just can't do it, uh, if you're a commercial vehicle for more than two hours at a time. Um, and if you're a non-commercial vehicle, uh, for not more than two hours at a time, just during those specific morning hours. You can park all day in your RV, um, but once it hits midnight to five, you need to be moving every two hours. Um, just so that you're not, you know, camping out um, and taking up spots for other people for an extended period of time. Richard is, am I missing any, anything there?
No, effectively you could park at any point during the day. It's just between that one period of time. You can only be parked for no more than two hours and you need to move the vehicle. And then you could park for another two hours. And, you know, this, this doesn't effectively exclude or eliminate parking. It, it, it's similar actually to our previous CDPs, which just require a turnover, uh, like we did for, for everybody in some areas of the city.
Okay, so are there additional questions of, uh, of staff? We'll be good to see if anybody else has anything, John. Uh, I don't see any hands up. Let's see if there's Craig. Okay. Questions of staff?
Of course, I have a question. Yeah, I, if, we, we need to make this tight to pass coastal muster, right? So this sounds sort of niggling, but the, it seems like the staff report conflates the ideas of parking and access. So that LUP seven twelve, uh, says restrictions on public parking shall not be permitted unless a comparable number of replacement parking spaces are provided. And it is demonstrated that such restrictions will not adversely impact access. So we're, we're clearly showing this is not impacting access. But it is technically a restriction on parking. Um, and, and you could make that case just by saying, well, just because you might park in one of these spots where the signs will be posted between twelve and five AM. You might, it not, might not be about coastal access. You might be parking there to visit your friend across the street or something. So. If you, we don't satisfy that section of the LUP that wants a comparable number of parking spaces. Because we've assumed that parking and access are the same thing. And because we're enhancing access to the coast, we're assuming that doesn't mean we haven't put a restriction on parking, but it is a restriction on parking.
All right, so the, 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 the issue is, the preliminary issue is whether or not this item needs to be uh, withdrawn and, and re-noticed as being appealable to the coastal commission under their, um, their approach. But, but putting that aside, then we get to the, to the, the more substantive issue of the, um, the, the merits of the application itself. So are there questions on the application itself, on the merits of the application? If not, we'll open the public hearing if there are people who want to speak on this. And then we'll come back to the commission table for discussion further. But can we move on to the, John, I see your hand up.
Uh, just a quick question. Uh, Jessica, is this, is this, I mean, just, does this, if you have a truck that's eighteen feet long and a trailer that's eighteen feet long and they're connected. Is that thirty-six feet?
I would think so.
Okay, um, now I just wanna point this out. I'm not, I actually am in favor of this item, but we lost in coastal commission when we tried to restrict basically a, uh, thirty-something foot van and trailer from parking overnight at Surf Rider. And they said, no, you cannot do that. And we lost.
Okay, John, I, I want to, I, I want to make sure that everybody understands what's at issue here. The issue is not the merits of this ordinance. Um, I've, we've all got our problems or questions about the ordinance itself. Some of us support it, some of them are questionable, but it's not about that. It's not about whether this ordinance is enforceable or contrary to what the coastal commission thinks. The only issue is, can we grant approval for the city to post signage at the, at the entrances to the city? It's all about signage, not about the merits of the ordinance itself.
I have one very, very short question then. Um, we, we name basically every street that goes through, but there's some other streets that go through that they go into the county. Or they go into other county roads, for example, Murphy Way in Sweetwater. Is there a reason they weren't named because they're minor streets or, uh, we forgot them or not many people use them?
Right, so we didn't, uh, include any streets that, um, you have to, you can't get to out of the city unless you're already in the city. I want to say Murphy Way is one of those where you, you technically you could enter from the county, but you can only get there from coming from within the city in the first place. Um, and we didn't include any streets that are un, uh, unpaved or, or undeveloped. Um, so Richard and I did go through every roadway that, uh, touches the city boundary, and those were the two types of roads that we didn't include. So you had to be able to get to, into the city from outside of the county purely, uh, or the road wasn't really a road.
So, so that would mean Sweetwater, because you have to drive up Sweetwater into the county, turn around and come back out.
Exactly.
It's not counted. And then Murphy Way's taken out because it's mostly dirt.
Okay, it's kind of, okay, it's gonna be kind of pro forma, but let me see if we've got any, uh, any ex parte communications that anybody wants to report. Craig, anything?
Um, no.
Uh, uh, David?
Oh.
John?
I've driven every street in my life.
And Dennis?
No.
Okay, and none for me. All right, so, uh, are there any public speakers, Kathleen?
Yes, we have one member of the public, Doug Stewart, who would like to speak.
Okay, let's open the public hearing. And have Mr. Mr. Stewart speak.
I don't see him in the meeting.
I don't either.
You don't see him in the meeting?
No.
All right, um. We can close the public hearing now. If he shows up, we can reopen it, uh, if we need to, but, uh, for the time being, let's close the public hearing. Let's come back to the commission table for comments, maybe a motion or some questions. Who would like to go first? Well, I, actually, I'm gonna go first myself. I am confused about this because it's difficult for me to understand what it is we're authorizing. The, the ordinance itself, as explained by, by Justine, is, is fairly complex. There are limitations on what you can do, what you can't do. Um, there are exceptions and exclusions and I don't know what these signs are going to look like. If you've got, if you've got all of those rules in the sign, it's gonna have to take billboard or, or twenty or thirty, like a, like a, uh, bermashave sign to explain all of these various limitations. So I would be more comfortable just judging from a, from a coastal, uh, development permit, uh, procedure, if we had some, a little visual to tell me what the signs were going to look like, uh, how big they were gonna be, that sort of thing. Without that, I feel like we're not really judging on anything and we're not really passing on anything. We're just sort of saying, yeah, go do it. Um. That's my comment. Any other comments?
Uh, I, 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 uh, have no problem with it really unless the city, uh, unless Richard tells us, yeah, it'd be kind of wise not to, uh, tell the coastal commission. They can't weigh in. Um, I, I kind of think I, that, that I question, but I'll go either way on it. Improve our.
Okay, if we run out of comments, we, we need, uh, I see Craig's hands up. Okay.
Uh, just to clarify, maybe Richard or Justine, you could clarify this. The, the LUP seven twelve, when you have restrictions on parking, you can't do that unless you do two things, one of which is, I think, have a comparable number of parking spaces and demonstrate that the restrictions don't impact access. Clearly, we have a good argument that we're not impacting access. We're, we're enhancing it. But that doesn't, the way I read out the, the clause there, that doesn't remove the requirement of a comparable number of parking spaces. Is that, have we done that? And I'm just not, I'm not seeing it, or what, what's the answer to that?
I think the, uh, answer, and Richard, you can correct me if I'm wrong, would be that because the regulations don't take away any parking, there wouldn't be a comparable number of spaces to provide. Uh, you know, you know what I'm saying? Um, we're not actually taking any parking away at any time for anybody. It's just you can't park for, in the same spot for a specific length of time, but there's no actually taking any parking away.
Well, and the clause reads restriction on or elimination of existing parking. So now you're, you're answering the second half of that, but it arguably would still be a restriction insofar as it's restricting the parking from vehicles of certain sizes.
And just to add to, to further what, uh, Justine was explaining, so for example, where we do the two-hour parking along Pacific Coast Highway, uh, in, say, the areas of Tuna Beach, um, Rowel Canyon and, uh, Zuma Beach. So in that situation, you know, you, you have an area and you can park in one area between two and twelve and the other area between twelve and four. And so one, to, to pull this thing apart, yes, it's a restriction. Uh, but because with the coastal commission staff informed us was what they were looking for was that there was still some way for someone to get to the beach. And so because we were restricting parking but still maintaining access within a reasonable distance, uh, that was fine. And so that same logic is what we're trying to use here, which is, actually, this is a bit more generous because that area, there was two hours, you effectively removed that block of traffic. Uh, what we're doing here though is basically saying that for that two-hour period, you just have to move somewhere else and that space is always open. It, it's, you know, it's, it's not going to be permanently removed through some sort of restriping project or construction. It's not going to be removed by any parking regulation because even though there's a parking regulation in place, it just means that one particular vehicle can't be there for that time. It needs to move to another space. So if, I don't know how many spaces we have on PCH. If we have three thousand spaces, effectively, three thousand spaces are always available now.
So are, are you saying that this, this particular requirement is not contested, that coastal has at least implicitly given its blessing on this and that it's, this doesn't affect, or this doesn't relate to the, um, I don't want to call them complaints, but the, the, the concerns that they had in the latest letter, we can skip over what I've raised and, and they're happy with that already?
I've, to, to get to your answer, it's, it's an inconsistent application of a policy. In one stance, uh, we have not been, we didn't receive any comments when we actually, like I said, for two hours moved that block across the street. Uh, but, and so what we've done is we've relied on that guidance and we've actually been more generous. Because if you think about it, if there are three thousand spaces, he, and a per, one, you know, one person has to move. That, that means there's two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine spaces left for them. Uh, and somebody else could come in and jump into that space where, like I said, this is less restrictive than what they've approved before.
Okay.
And to get to, uh, Chair Jennings' point, uh, on the signage, it would basically be, as we said in summary, we would essentially, um, highlight the language there that's, that you see in the page seven of the staff report, which states that the, the parking of non-commercial vehicles is limited to two hours citywide between twelve and five AM. That is going to be the language that we post. Yes, it would be a, a larger sign. Uh, it, the city of Santa Monica, city of Pasadena, I forget the other examples that were brought up at the time of the, the hearing on the ordinance. Uh, but those cities have done a similar thing where on the entrance to the city, they posted a, a sign to, to catch folks' attention and then refer them to the code section and then just have some general language because you are correct, Chair Jennings, that if we tried to put everything in there, uh, it, it's gonna be a larger sign and these signs are typically maybe about two feet by two feet. Uh, we will do as required by code so that it's properly noticed. Uh, but the intention is to explain that there's a citywide, uh, limitation on the parking of oversized vehicles between the hours of twelve AM and five PM, but we would not define, uh, the deep, the level of detail like you see there where a pickup truck with overhangs and, and things of that nature.
Uh, i- i- is the, is the point of, of the signage to lay the predicate for uh, a ticket that can actually be enforced? Is this, is this the idea of trying to give public notice so that you can then write a ticket for somebody that a judge will actually enforce?
Yes, that is correct. We have, we've already put the, the, on the ordinance is already in the traffic section of the Malibu Municipal Code. However, until we post the signage to alert people to that ordinance, uh, we have not been enforcing it.
Okay.
Okay, I still have three questions here.
All right, let's go.
Um, I seem to recall that SCE has some rule about Um, I seem to recall that SCE has some rule about not allowing signage on its poles. I don't know if that had to do with election signage or something relating to the overloading of the polls and the lawsuits, but. Is that, is that not true? Is that a, am I just making that up?
I don't, uh, I haven't heard that rule. Um, that was included as part of the original ordinance. Um, when it was under discussion, that was part of what was discussed. Um, if SCE doesn't allow a sign to be placed on the pole, then we would do, you know, presumably whatever we would do if there wasn't a pole at all. You know, put it on a a thin metal.
That leads to the net, the related question. You just said that the signs are maybe two by two. One of Coastal's concern in the letter, they're talking about. These are, there are view issues and and, I mean, it seems to me like those kinds of concerns are pretty negligible here. Because we're talking about a really finite number of signs and they're not that big and, but that what they, that was an issue they raised. So I don't know what, how we're supposed to respond to that. Other, maybe we, maybe we just say it's negligible. Sorry.
You have another question? Your third question?
Third question, wha- what what do we know about the fines? Um, because it seems to me what the fines might be, that seems sort of integral to. Understanding the effectiveness of the ordinance if, and and maybe that should be on the sign that says. Subject to fine of, you know, whatever it is, five hundred dollars or whatever it is, so that people have some sense of the stakes.
To answer your, the fine question, um, that was included as part of the ordinance and I can look that up. Uh, and let you know that that was included um back in twenty seventeen. Um, and your other question about um visual impacts. We did include the scenic visual and hillside resource protection findings, uh, the chapter, LIP chapter six findings in these reports. And um, came to the conclusions kind of as you just mentioned that um these signs would be minimal. Uh, roadside signs are not uncommon uh along these roads. Um, some of them are scenic roads, but not all of them. Um. And uh, and mostly that the signs wouldn't impact a significant view, um particularly to a traveling vehicle.
To consider.
Okay, so uh, we're looking for a motion on either uh five D or five E. Somebody would like to uh propose one?
I believe that uh Pat wanted us to do them separately.
Yes, but I I'm saying either one. Give me a.
I'll I'll say approve um five E.
Recommend, the the staff recommendation on five E is your motion, right?
Right, and uh, I'm not including posting the fine on the sign because the sign, the fines change every year. You have to change the sign every year.
Maybe some, subject to fine or some general language without the dollar amount.
Yes, because as Chairman also pointed out, it's gonna be, uh, chapter one, the reference there is, it's whatever the fee schedule for fines. As adopted by the city council yearly.
Okay, so uh, you've heard John's motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that moved and seconded. Is there further discussion on five E? This is the uh. Northern city boundary public right of way of Tuna Canyon Road, Decra Canyon Road, and so on, so on, the ones that are within the appellate jurisdiction. Conceitedly within the appellate jurisdiction. Further discussion? Call the roll, Kathleen, please.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion now on.
I'd like to make a motion on five F to approve as staff recommends.
I think uh, you mean five D, don't you?
D, okay, D.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? To call the roll, please, Kathleen.
Um, I'm sorry, who made the second?
I did.
Craig.
Craig.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chair Jennings, I'd like to make a motion. We adjourn in honor of Kathy Sullivan.
All right, moved. Uh, I'll second that. Uh, moved and seconded. Uh, no, Kathleen, you have to call a roll on adjournment, please.
Okay, um, one moment, please. Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Turn off your computers tonight, guys.
Thank you, everyone. Why is that? Because the power's gonna go off?
If it does, you don't want to fry anything.
Yeah, okay. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Good night.
Sea level rise. So we had actually contracted David Weiss's office and we had determined that, yes, there would probably be, even if.